Welcome, everybody, this evening. We'll get the meeting started. Jill could take roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yep.
Scott? Kelsey?
Here, and apologetic for my lateness due to my internet issues.
Vern?
Yes.
Don? Craig? We have a quorum of four.
Thank you. So we have the agenda in front of us. Can we get a motion to approve the agenda?
I still moved with the amendment we just discussed of dropping the old business until we meet in person.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Second from Kelsey.
Roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott? Don? Craig. Okay, motion carries.
The third item is the approval of the minutes. We had received the June meeting minutes here previously. Any corrections or additions to those meeting minutes? If not, is there a motion to approve?
So move.
Okay, we have a motion to approve. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott? Don? Craig. We, our motion carries.
Okay. We'll go into the public hearings. First on the agenda is Michael Walls, variance for accessory structure in front yard in front setback.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Can you hear me okay? Okay. So Michael Walls is asking for a variance to construct a detached accessory garage within the front yard setback and in the front yard. This is defined as the area from the road right of way to the front of the primary structure. His application was received on June 22nd. It was published in the paper on July 11th. Notices were mailed out to all the neighbors within 350 feet on July 15th. We are here tonight, and our 60-day deadline is in August. So a little background here. Due to the area where the existing shed was located, which we'll get to on Plan A, there currently is an easement there. The area to be chosen here is what we're calling Plan B. That Plan B location that the applicant would like to be reviewed. This area is in the front yard, and it may not meet the front yard setback of the 30 feet, depending upon final location, so we're going to review that as well here. This lot is a little unique in that it has a road coming on it from three ways essentially. Summit Avenue has two entry points, and then there is a 33-foot wide easement on the property that gives access. There is a city easement that goes along Summit Avenue that has a shed on it now that is looked at as Plan A. The river also requires a 50-foot setback from the OHW. This limits the ability to place a structure in the rear one-third of the lot or the rear yard in general. So our ordinance in Chapter 154.017, specifically B1, talks about practical difficulties. These are the criteria that we review in order to give a variance. From the code, we review these six criteria questions. Specifically, in the R1 zone, we require that we have a depth of 30 feet. And then also, in our code under 154.01, or 091, we state that all detached accessory buildings should not be located in the required front or side yard. So here's a diagram of the property. As you can see, this area that's highlighted here in green, this is where that existing shed is currently. Well, there's one here and one here. This one is now gone. The applicant is looking to rebuild. This is a city easement for, this is a water line going through here. Since this is a city easement, they're asked that we don't rebuild any new structures on there. So this is what was submitted by the applicant, and when we discussed the plan locations, obviously Plan A was up where the old one was in this area. Here tonight, we're addressing the Plan B location, which is what is chosen, which is what I've highlighted over here in the orange to show. Still within the required front yard, and the reason why is this is actually Summit Avenue right of way over here. This is that easement, that 33-foot wide easement that I told you about that comes off of Mount Faith. And then here is Summit Avenue coming down. Well, in reality, it's actually just this part here that comes down to the property as well in this location. So due to the easement, the original, like I said, Plan A was here. Then, once reviewing it with staff, Plan B was, is our chosen location, and we can talk with the applicant once we get to that point on how that all happened. You said this lot is kind of unique in that we have, obviously, the front, or we have Summit Avenue coming down over here, we have Summit Avenue right of way over here, and then we have this easement, which is what they actually use to access the property. This is technically a front yard coming off of the road over here, so therefore, this whole area is considered front property. And then, obviously, the rear would be our riverside, which is, encompasses kind of this triangular areas are only buildable area to be in the rear yard. The other part of it, too, then, is obviously Summit Avenue coming down creates that front yard as well. So not a lot of great options here in terms of having a rear yard to build a structure in the way our ordinance is laid out. These are some proposed findings I provided to you all, showing approval. Again, if you read some of these and you don't agree, that would give you some reasons to think about denial. But again, these are just proposed findings, not to, for your consideration. One letter was received regarding this prior to the meeting. That was from CB Properties. They own property at 1001 East Summit Avenue. They were not in favor of Plan A, C, A or C, or the code options that were laid out in one or two. They were based off of, there's some title issues that they're currently working on that they discussed regarding the road. And then Plan A and Code 1 would restrict views for the neighbors to the north and wouldn't be aesthetically appealing upon purchase. Mr. Walls accepted the garage as an as of this location of the garage. He does not, he also is, his responsibility to perform due diligence, as you can read here. Then, lastly, the CB Properties does not oppose the Plan B on the variance application. However, they do not oppose denial of this request either.
So what was the last thing you said?
They do not oppose Plan B of the variance, however, they, they do, they does not oppose the denial of the request either. So they don't oppose a Plan B or, obviously, denial. They're not in favor of Plan A or C or the code options one and two, which relates to this map. Plan A would be here, Plan C is here, and then code options would have been these two here options.
And which road has issues that they're referring to having in there?
This summit, which the applicant can certainly speak to if they wish. Be much more familiar with that than. Let's see here. Yeah, that's the only letter I did not, this is what I received prior to the meeting. Do you have any other questions of me? Otherwise, the applicant is here and can speak to anything before we open up the public hearing.
So is there any questions for Darren before we open up the public hearing?
The question I'd have, the, the letter you received, did that, are we talking about summit coming from the east or summit coming from the west?
I believe the issues in what they're dealing with right now, or trying to figure out, is summit coming from the east. I think summit coming from the west has never been an issue, or is planted there.
Well, I know from past real estate experience, that's really a hodgepodge down in that area. And I guess the question being, you know, in a city owns some land in there, does the city ever look at running the two summits together and running summit through?
What I can say to that is, I can't answer that, and really, all we're here looking at tonight is putting the garage in the front yard based off of summit on the west being front. And so, obviously, this is a shed between the summit from the west and the front of his home. So that's really the only thing of concern that we need to deal with tonight. I, yeah, obviously, there are some issues, like you mentioned, but at the end of the day, I couldn't answer those questions, nor do we really need to tonight.
So, Mr. Chair? Go ahead, Vern.
Go ahead.
You can finish, Vern.
So basically, what we're looking at is, we're down to Site B, Plan B.
Correct.
Okay.
And what I was going to say, Mr. Chair, is so you've had no objections to Site B?
The letter I received, yeah, did not object to Site B. So they own, they are at 1001 East Summit Avenue. I don't know which property that is specifically. Mike, do you know by chance who that would be or where, which home they would be?
Right, that would be the parcel that cursor to the line, heard that one.
Okay. So they own this property. But, yeah, they, they did not like Plan A, C, Code Option 1 or Code Option 2, and that was based off of, again, those reasons of, there were some issues with the road boundary, in the boundaries of this parcel that are currently ongoing. Parcel, or Plan A and Code 1 would obstruct the views for the neighbors to the south and also would not be aesthetically appealing. Mr. Walls agreed to the garage as is in its current location. He has a responsibility for due diligence and, but then it does go on to say CB Properties does not oppose to Plan B of the variance application. However, it does not oppose the denial of the request either. So based on their letter, they don't oppose to Plan B, which is what we are.
Any other questions before we open up the public hearing? If not, we'll open the public hearing. So if anybody would like to come and speak, if you could just come to the microphone, state your name and address? Or if you're online, just state your name and address.
Is everybody unmuted?
Hi, this is Sierra Walls. I'm Mike's wife, and I just wanted to make sure that Mike was, I guess, present in following this, because it was my understanding he'd be there in person. I was going to join online. I have my little one here. Do you happen to know if he's there right now, listening to this?
Yes, he is.
Okay, good. I'm sorry. I just wanted to, to make sure that he's following this, because I didn't know if there was something he wanted to speak to here. So, thank you.
Yep.
So, Mike, is there anything you want to add?
Certainly, if you want to come up and speak into the microphone.
Sure.
The quiet title action largely affected that road running east and west on the north boundary line. You'll see there's kind of a gap where the middle parcel actually dips south. All of that has since been cleared up through the quiet title action. All we are waiting for right now is the judge to approve a stipulated agreement between all parties, including the city, which would actually then give the city a standard 33-foot road along that north property line and thereby defining or clearing up what probably was a right-of-way issue.
Okay.
Close the hearing?
Any other questions or anybody else would like to speak? If not, we will close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for discussion.
Is there a motion?
We'll need a motion.
Okay. I will make a motion to approve the Plan B location as presented.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the Plan B.
Based off of these findings?
Yep.
Based off the findings. Do we have a second?
I would second that.
Okay. All those in favor? Roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott? Don? Craig. Motion passes.
Okay, it's approved.
Oh, for City Council.
Thank you. Approved at the Planning Commission.
Right.
We'll go to City Council at the next meeting. Next up, Brian Draxton, variance for accessory structure in front yard.
All right, so Mr. Draxton is asking for a variance to construct a detached 20-by-24 accessory garage within the front yard. This is defined as the area from the road right of way to the front of the primary structure. You're going to receive this on the 26th. And it was published on July 11th. It was mailed on July 15th. We are here tonight on the 27th, and our deadline is in August. So a little background here, the current dwelling on this site sits at 75 feet from Hoot Lake. Therefore, no structures can exist between the rear yard without a variance due to 75 feet being the setback requirement for Hoot Lake. So having a detached accessory structure, the only place where it can happen without, well, only place can happen is in the front yard without obstructing a rear setback variance. So if our intent is to preserve views and the natural resources near the lake, then having in the front would make sense. The intent of the code here would be to protect the water body, so I think I would rather see a structure in the front yard with a variance request than a structure within the setback to the lake, assuming we can meet practical difficulties. Again, here is 154.017, which is our practical difficulty criteria, and then the R1 district, which requires that front yard of 30 feet, and then also detached accessory buildings to not be located in the front or rear yard. So here's a survey with kind of a drawing showing the location of the existing house, and then where this proposed garage would be. The applicant is looking to have it 30 feet off of the front yard from the right of way and then 10 feet off the side, so it would meet our primary structure requirements in terms of setbacks. So here's an aerial showing this property with an approximate location. You can see there is an existing smaller shed located on the property right now up in this general area. Again, the setback, 75 feet from the lake, goes to the front of, or the back of the home right now. So the lake requires this to be essentially a not buildable area. The code would require that the shed to actually be located back here, which wouldn't be possible due to the setback to the lake. Hence, having something up in the front would make a little bit more sense if we're trying to keep things further away from the lake. Here are some proposed findings showing approval. Again, if some of these, if you don't agree with some of these, then that would give us indications to look at denial. I received no comments or calls prior to the meeting on this request. And that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Any questions from the Planning Commission before we open up the public hearing? If not, we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to address the commission, please state your name and address. If not, we'll bring it back to the Planning Commission for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve the variance as requested with the said findings.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve. Is there a second?
I would second that.
Okay, all those in favor? Roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott? Don? Craig. Motion carries.
Approved.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next up, John Opat and Anderson, CUP for animal grooming.
Okay, all right. So this is a conditional use permit. This is for dog grooming establishment in the I-2. Being this is a retail use as permitted in the business district, the I-2 zone required that this be ran through a conditional use. We received this on July 8th, then published July 11th in the paper. We mailed all the notices on the 15th of July. We are here tonight, and there's our 60-day deadlines. So a little background here, there's currently a building on-site. This property is zoned I-2. The applicant is looking to do a dog grooming on-site with no animal boarding. There would be an outside play area behind the building so that animals have a place to go as well during or after grooming. There are no city water or sewer utilities on-site, so this is all private systems here. The applicant has stated that they're looking to be open 8 to 4 Monday through Friday and possibly open on Saturdays if demand required. So this is a property that we are looking at here. This is right behind the marine, like, business right on 210, coming into town. Here is the proposed layout of the proposed dog grooming establishment. As you can see, the entrances would be over here, which is the current garage area, then would be some of the kennels, and then the wash and clean area over here. So conditional use permits, we look at 154.019. So the purpose of that is, obviously, to give flexibility to achieve goals, put conditions on the permit. The standards are found here under subpart D, and the 1 through 8 are specific standards that we need to review when going through a conditional use permit. We can also, obviously, add conditions on a conditional use permit. Here are some proposed findings that I have, 1 through 7, mostly because of the pay. Additional considerations or different requirements in code, which we don't have any. So here are some proposed findings. Again, if there's something that, you know, you read, you want to add to it or take away, we can look at these or amend them. If you do choose to look at approval of this, I do have some proposed conditions. Those would be, must have the SST system evaluated by a licensed septic designer to ensure the private septic system is able to handle the proposed new use. If any upgrades are required by the designer or the county, then they must be completed prior to opening business. A written report from a county SST official or a private SST designer must be submitted to the city prior to opening, giving the okay for the system to be used for the use or provide a list of upgrades needed. And then, all local and state laws pertaining to the use should be followed, and then also any animal waste or fur should be properly disposed of in approved containers and hauled off-site. Again, these, these are just examples. You can not use them or add to them, however you deem fit, if you feel that they are needed in order to prove use. I received no comments or calls prior to the meeting on this, and that is all I have.
Okay, thank you, Darren. Any questions from the commission to Darren?
Mr. Chair, I have one. The sewer system, do the applicants think it's going to be used a lot more? I mean, it's going to be a couple of employees, to have them go through those costs and things. I mean, clearly, the dogs aren't going to be using it. So I'm just wondering, I just, a new business, I want to try and help as much as we can, and if we can minimize costs, I just wonder, is it really going to change that much, a couple of employees using a bathroom?
Yes, it will, and the reason why is...
The water?
The water from the cleaning of the animals will run through here as well.
Okay, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
Yeah, so it would be a big difference from what it was to say one or two employees using a business to now adding all the dogs' water to clean.
What is the cost of something like that for someone?
It's a private individual for service, so I couldn't tell you, but evaluating it will be one fee, and then designing a new system would be, if it needs it, would be another fee, and then, obviously, the install of it would be, of course, costly. But at the end of the day, being there isn't city services here, they need to treat their, you know, the, the dirty water before, obviously, somehow, so.
I mean, part, part of me is just thinking, it's their private thing, they can't get on city services. If it's not working, they're going to have to fix it. You know what I mean? Like, I just, I don't know to what extent, when we're not offering city services, we should mandate it, I guess. That's just me.
But the county probably is going to make them do it anyway, right?
Correct, yeah, they're going to need to get it inspected, in part of the...
The county will, anyway.
If they do purchase it, I think they have a transfer, you know, or tell them.
Right, so they don't own it yet.
I'm not, I don't believe so. The applicant, or, one of the applicants is online, we can certainly ask.
I didn't realize they didn't own it.
But even if it's a...
Right, if they're buying it, they'll have to get a check.
Yeah, and then even if it's used, you know, that change in use, they'll need to evaluate to make sure that it's sized appropriately, based on that change.
That was my only question.
Any other questions from the commission?
I guess my question would be, seeing it's in the city limits, does the county have jurisdiction on, or is this a city matter?
Only on the septic system would the county be reviewing.
On the septic?
Yep.
Yes, on the septic system.
Yeah, I believe they would, unless we have somebody here, which I don't believe we do. So I believe they would, unless we have somebody on staff who can review a new septic install. But if not, I, I'm not sure if we've delegated that to the county. I think we have. But I don't believe it's anyone here. So yes, that, only that would be.
Okay, if there's no other questions, we'll open up the public hearing. If anybody would like to address the commission, just please state your name and address.
And Chelsea is online. If there's anything she would like to add, you can certainly unmute yourself and speak if you wish to add anything at this time.
Can we ask a question?
Yeah, this is Andy Anderson. You need my address, 508 East Gustavus Avenue, Burgess Falls. Due to, for what it's worth, we have looked into, you know, the rough amount of water usage, and it's, it roughly works out to about 10 gallons per dog, for washing dogs. So, you know, 100 gallons per day. You know, just a quick look online shows average use is roughly 100 gallons per person per day in a household. So I'm not sure what that would affect on the system itself.
Yes, the idea with the condition is, as written, is to just have someone who reviews septic systems just say, yep, this works for what you guys are looking to do, and just provide a copy of that via a letter, email, whatever, just to ensure that, yep, it'll handle it, is, is the only, is what the intent of that language is.
I think that's fair. Is there any other?
Yeah, we agree.
Okay.
We sure do.
Anything else before we close the public hearing? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve with set conditions.
Okay, we have a motion to approve with set conditions. Is there a second?
Second from Kelsey.
Kelsey seconds. Roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott? Don? Craig. Okay, motion carries.
Approved, thank you. Upcoming applications, Darren?
Yeah, so we will be hearing four items next month. One is a rear yard variance for, the HRA is looking to build an apartment building, and they will be looking at the rear yard variance. From their requirement, the mall is looking to subdivide another piece off, the Dunham's addition is what they're calling it, the separate Dunham's off. Tom Kingston, he has submitted a variance application to rebuild his house in a similar location to where it is now. If you're familiar with that one. And then, lastly, this area here that I've highlighted in red is off of what is called Main Street and 17th Street. It's come to our attention that, well, I can show you, this is our current zoning. So as you can see, this entire area here in purple is zoned I-1, industrial 1. Right now, all the uses in here are residential, mostly, except for maybe like a home business, but otherwise, they're all residential uses. Therefore, they're non-conforming. So all of these homes would fall under non-conforming. Things can't be expanded. You know, if they cease use for over a year, they need to be no longer used for dwellings, they have to be used for industrial use. What I am suggesting is that we, as a commission, review this, and if it is a good idea to start our own rezoning request to do a public hearing next month to change all of this to either R1 or our future land use. So here's kind of a screenshot of kind of some of the first couple of homes on the front side. This is the twenty thirty future zoning map, and they show this area here is actually all R four. But I think, you know, making it either R one.
R two, maybe?
Or R two, or R four. One or two would probably, you know, make most sense, but I want to have the discussion. I think changing it makes sense so that all of these homes don't become nonconforming, or, you know, are not nonconforming. I think our future zoning map, you know, highlighting them as a residential use gives them the, gives us the direction that that was what they intended to go to get this corrected. So all this all initiated was, of course, someone, you know, brought that up and we just come to our attention, and so now looking at the whole situation, maybe this whole property, or this whole area, I should say, should be reviewed. So what, basically what I'm looking at here is a motion to, well, under new business, I guess, I would like to have some discussion or a motion on how to make that. I guess we can jump in, or you can call this new business part of it, I guess. We need to review what we would want to set, what zone we want to set that up as, and then do a public hearing next month to then we notify all the neighbors and everyone within here that we're looking to rezone it to a residential use instead of I one.
What are the widths of the lots?
That's a great question. Let me take a look here.
They just look smaller. You're on camera, you know.
It's going to vary greatly. There are some smaller lots and some larger, they're not really consistent, but.
I guess what you have is primarily meats and milk.
Sorry, bad question.
Well, no, it's just taking a little bit of time.
He can decide without it.
There we go.
Nonconforming.
All right, so. So again, this is kind of the area we're looking at here. As you can see, it's surrounded by R one, some industrial over here, and R A.
And so R two wouldn't be crazy.
Yeah, there's no other out there, but it, no, it's anything residential here. So let's just see here. So this parcel. Fifty-five-ish.
So what's the big one there?
Eighty. This one's going to be pretty wide, too. This one might be a little more narrow. Yeah, it's probably the smallest one. It's probably just twenty-five, no, well, no, forty-five, fifty.
I'll make a motion that we look at rezoning this to R two.
Okay, there's been a motion to rezone, this is R two, do we have a second?
Question I would have, I know at one time, and I don't know if it still is, but there is some commercial use in there, I believe, or it was at one time.
I believe there's a home business out of there, other than that, I'm.
What kind of home business?
I'm not entirely sure, I believe somebody.
Would they be grandfathered in though, because they're there?
A home occupation would be allowed in our.
Allowed, okay.
You know, if there's something ran out of your home.
Right.
I don't know if this property has a pretty large shed here, I don't know if there was something on this property at one point in time.
Well, I think that's just a bunch of old cars and stuff there, but I believe I believe possibly Harlow's or someone back in there had a business going, I think it was maybe one of the Harlow's boys.
How does that work if someone's existing, doing something now, and it's not, it doesn't meet the new?
If it's an existing business, it would be, you know, allowed to be there and just they couldn't expand it. It'd be nonconforming, just like right now, all of the homes are nonconforming in here. That business would just be turned nonconforming and wouldn't be allowed to expand.
Or could come for a conditional use permit or something.
Only if that was a, you know, in the R two, we wouldn't have anything, unless it was listed in the R two zone.
Is R four better from that perspective for them?
Not necessarily, I mean, it's nothing. R four would be smaller lots.
Okay, let me ask this crazy, maybe not legal. Can we, instead of picking a zone and doing like an official public notice, can we send out a letter saying you guys are not conforming? Planning Commission wants to look at rezoning you and invite them to our meeting without a plan and figure out what the feedback is?
Well, I mean, yes, that could be done at the end of the day.
I don't know if that's better PR from the perspective of no one's getting a letter that's just announcing, hey, this is what we're going to do to your property.
I think we should look in, I think we should look into this a little more and see what the uses are back in there and give the folks a chance to express their thoughts.
Yeah, I'll withdraw my motion, I agree.
Okay, so is the consensus that we kind of find out what's back there for sure in terms of homes and businesses, to kind of get a feel for it? If there are any?
Yes, I think that's a good idea.
Just trying to think, if I could pull assessor down, it'd be the only way I'm going to find, besides driving around looking for a sign or something, you know, it's the only way I'm going to find assessors if they have any commercial use back there.
Is there a way to just send a letter out to these property owners and say, this part of Fergus is on the agenda for rezoning next month? Or for talking about initial conversation about rezoning and send something out?
We can. Let's just see here what we have for perspective, so. Okay, so R one, single family, seven thousand square feet, hundred and twenty, or minimum width of sixty feet at the building line. So sixty feet versus R two. We're going to have a lot of area, six thousand square feet, and then fifty feet at the building's F F line. So R two would be fifty feet with six thousand square feet in size, which almost all of them should meet, even that smaller one. In terms of what type of uses, that's it. We can send a letter. Just thinking in the form, it makes more sense to send out a, in order to speed up the process. If we sent out a letter saying we're looking to rezonate to from an industrial to an R two, and then we get a lot that would be, and your opportunity to speak on this is at the meeting. If we don't hear anybody saying, I have a commercial use or something like that, then, you know, that I want to speak, kept going in the industrial zone. You can move forward with it. I don't know, from a, I get it from a PR standpoint, right here. At least they could keep it moving forward.
Is there a timeline that has to have it moving forward, like, I mean, is there, I mean, there's nothing, no fire over our head, is there?
No, but if there is somebody who's looking to, I'm assuming, move in or expand or move back into a dwelling or something like that, would that
That is happening?
I believe so, and so this would help with that situation. Now, at the same time, you can always, if we get to the meeting and something like does come in and says, well, this is commercial use here. We could table it for another month or review to something else, and you would have that opportunity to not move forward, but you, after the public hearing, if you do get those comments and say, you know, they could leave this industrial, and you get several people that comment that way, you could, you know, say, not go with that recommendation, say, okay, we won't do this, and then call for a different one and redo it.
So is my understanding that the way it's zoned right now is preventing someone from moving into a house?
Correct.
Okay, that changes things a little bit, I guess.
But right now, it's industrial use zones, so the dwellings out there that's been empty for more than a year could not be moved back in as a dwelling because it's not conforming. Now, same could be said, so, because it's just like a commercial use in a residential zone, if it is abandoned and no longer used as a commercial use for over a year, then it can't be brought back as a commercial use. But as long as it keeps on being used as a commercial use, it's fine, we keep on being used commercially. So nothing would prevent anything, if there is a commercial use out there right now, from continuing happening, but it could already go away. So it's big picture wise, you didn't think, well, it's this area designed or meant to be used for residential uses or commercial uses. Right now, it's zoned for industrial uses, excuse me. But, you know, looking at our future zoning map and the area, it appears that that might not be the best going forward. So now it's just a matter of what parcels and.
So I guess my off-the-cuff response, maybe not appropriate, is maybe we need to look a blind eye to letting someone move back into a house. And instead of affecting a whole bunch of people's parcels in a rushed manner and making a decision that I don't feel is very educated right now. If it's a house, everyone around him is a house, why are we making people jump through legalities like this? I mean, this seems a little bit nuts to me.
Yeah, we're trying to correct.
Right, I get that, I totally get that, but what, I just feel like we're rushing for a whole bunch of people when the easiest solution is house, let someone live in a house, we're going to fix this this fall. We're just not going to rush it for all these other people that may have a business that wants to expand, and if they can't expand, that hurts them long run.
I just wonder if, you know, with your original motion, if we were to approve that, the letters are going to go out to everybody there.
Right.
We will then find out kind of what the scoop is, and then we'll really be able to make up a decision based off of that public hearing in terms of what we find. So I don't think it's necessarily bad to go ahead and do that, and that, it doesn't mean that's how it's going to end up.
Right, that's true.
Yeah, and that was, I guess, my initial thinking, I totally understand what you're trying to.
I'm just talking practical, like, it just seems like.
Yep, I hear you, and and I, the only reason why I selected that whole area is because I saw that in the future zoning map reflected that way, so like, okay, well, maybe this is a chance to reflect the way it was intended. You know, could we just pull in two or three parcels that are up near the road that we know are an issue right now? Yes, then, you know, because there's obviously, if you saw the picture.
So it's what part is in question right now?
I'm not a hundred percent sure.
Oh, okay, you don't.
I just know it's in this general area. So you know, instead of just changing one, I was like, well, let's just fix the whole problem here. Assuming that they're all.
So, okay, let me ask you this, if we go back to my motion and it passes, we could get to the point of saying, at the next meeting where the hearing is, the only scoop we want to go forward with is this bunch of them, and only move forward with this bunch, we could drop out some others?
Well, I think what we do is we would go back and we could amend the request to get a different legal. Because right now, what we would do is we'd create a legal for that whole chunk.
Right.
And say, we're going to amend this area to be R two.
Right.
And if what came out of the public hearing was, is we need to leave out X, Y, and Z parcels, we could then just go back and do a new mailing to say, this is the, all right, we're going to amend this area to R two and not include the other parcels and leave those out. And then move forward with that.
Could we, could we make the motion to state that the Planning Commission is recommending to switch it to R two? And then we would vote on it at the public hearing to finalize it?
So then we're having, we're completely flexible? Then we don't have to do another mailing?
Then we'd be recommending, instead of making a motion to approve tonight, we'd just be recommending that we're.
Yes, yep, so yeah, all we're doing tonight is just.
Okay, well, I think that's okay.
I'm fine with that.
Because then we don't, we're not set in stone on anything, we're not making a motion to do it, okay.
We have a whole hearing, you know, we have to go through the process.
Yep.
But what I want is just a motion to go through that process of a Planning Commission initiated review of this area.
And I think that's good, because then we'll get the public, we'll hear from the public, and that's really what we want.
I'll put that motion out there.
Okay, does everybody understand the motion?
I'll second, Kelsey.
Okay.
What's the motion for sure?
A motion to move forward with the process of starting to look at rezoning this area of Main Street to R two. To start the process, basically.
So if I may, what that would mean is we would send out a notice to all the property owners in here and within three hundred and fifty feet of this property. A notice in the mail that says we are going to rezone these properties from I one to R two, whatever's in R two. And we would like your feedback and public comments or concerns regarding this at the meeting held August, whatever the date is. And then at that time, obviously, we would invite everybody to come to a meeting just like this, and they could tell us if there's any concerns, and if not, we would move forward with it. And we could go from there.
Yep, very good.
The only concern I have is, is I think there's a misconception from when places have been annexed in this town that once, if you have something, when it changes, you're grandfathered in. I'm concerned that those businesses, if there are any, need to understand they might not be able to expand. So I think we need to put some extra effort in, on staff behalf or whoever, to reach out to these businesses or figure out if there are businesses in there so they fully understand what they're reading, because they might not understand that, and I don't want someone's livelihood to not have the opportunity to speak to their concerns.
I could put a, I think I could put something in maybe like the notice or something like that, that talks about nonconformities and that kind of thing. Because, yeah, like, because at the same time, some people might not know they're industrially zoned.
Exactly.
And know that they couldn't add on to their house because of the way it is currently, so.
I mean, even if you drive out there and say, okay, it's very clearly this business, like, picking up the phone, I think that's an important part of this, to just start the conversation.
Yeah, I can go drive over there next week and just see if there's anything.
I think you'll know if there's.
Yeah, I think you'll be able to tell.
If they said, there may be home businesses, but that would be absolutely allowed.
Right. I just want to make sure we, if we're initiating it, I feel like it's really important that no one feels like they were, like, blindsided by this.
Agreed.
Okay, so we do have a motion and a second, so let's take roll call.
Jeff?
Yes.
Laurel?
Yes.
Kelsey?
Yes.
Vern?
Yes.
Scott, Don, Craig, okay, motion carries.
Okay, very good. Darren, anything else?
Uh, no, very much to the ordinance, that's all I have.
All right, thank you, meeting's adjourned.
Thank you.